Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, February 18th, 2004. The City Council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us for members of the public unable to attend council meetings. We can also be viewed live via webcast from the City's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Thank you very much. The Council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have one recognition presentation today. Madam Clerk, would you like to recognize the council number sign?
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I'd like to introduce our colleagues and to our audience and our TV viewers, the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Political Action Committee, who are joining us today. And we see them in the front row here. Please stand and be recognized. These are all members of the Police Department, all members of the Protective League, Political Action Committee. And we thank you for joining us today. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for being here today. Political Action Committee, L.A., Police Department. Does that bring back memories there?
Brings back fond memories. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, first sort of business, please.
Approval of the minute.
Madam Sine, Mr. Varela, go first.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel, move to Mr. Reyes, seconds.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And I do not have requests from members of the public wishing to address the council on non-agenda items. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
There is a request to continue one of the closed session items, item number 38. The city attorney is requesting that matter be continued for one week, which would be February 25th.
Members request to continue item 38 without objections or protest. Okay, let's call this special as we wait. Ms. Cardenas, next. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items 3 through 17.
Members, items 3 through 17 now before us, public hearings have been held on these matters in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing such motion, do we have requests for specials? Beginning with Mr. Parks.
Item 13, 14 for Mr. Weiss.
I believe there is an amendment on item number nine. Mr. Garcetti has an amending motion to delete some of the recommendations.
Has that been circulated?
No, it's going to be a verbal amendment, I believe.
Let's call it special for Mr. Weiss.
Ms. Han, any other specials?
Members, items 3 through 17. Now before us, we have items 5, 9, 13 and 14 called special. Any other specials? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. The balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 33, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, the council shall consider items 18 through 33 today. Colleagues that do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items, public hearings are open, public hearings are closed. Members should call any specials, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Item 29, called special by Mr. Reyes.
Item 30, called special by Ms. Sine. Any other specials, items 18 through 33? Seeing none, please open the roll. Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items, they're closed sessions 34 through 41 with the exception of 38, which two fold those on the desk.
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Going back to the items called special, item number 2 is called special, however Ms. Cardenas is not here. Item number 5 was called special by Councilmember Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to add an amending motion. This is actually already an amendment and it involves leases for boat slips that are in part are in Long Beach and part are in our Port of Los Angeles. There's 80 slips that are in the Port of Long Beach and 20 are located in the Port of Los Angeles. And what we have before us, before my motion is that, in fact, someday, if the Port of Long Beach terminates the leases for those 80 boat owners, then the Port of Los Angeles also has the right to terminate their lease for the 20. Some of these people have leased these spaces for many, many years. Their family owned. And so what I wanted to do was verbally amend this to say that in the event of termination of the lease with Island Yacht Anchorage, that the Harbor Department first make every effort to relocate all tenants to other boat slips within the Port of Los Angeles. So I want them to take an effort to relocate those boat owners before they terminate their lease.
Any objections to that amending motion? Seeing none, we'll consider item 5 as amended. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Item 5 as amended, seeing none, we'll consider item 5 as amended. Seeing none, let's open the roll. Item 5 as amended, seeing none, we'll consider item 5 as amended.
Item number 9 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilmember Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items 1, 2 and 3 in there because they've already been acted on, I'll move the rest.
Okay, without objection. Item 9 as amended, other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 was called special. It's called special by Councilman Garcetti.
Good morning, everybody. Welcome to City Hall. Welcome to council chambers and welcome to a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for today, Wednesday, February 18th, 2004. The city council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Meetings are open to the public and we do invite you to join us. For members of the public unable to attend council meetings, we can be viewed live on your table station, Channel 35. You can also be viewed live via webcast from the city's homepage or heard via council phone. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas Garcetti, Gruel, La Bange, La Lomisakowski Park, Rayas, and members present.
Thank you very much. The council is officially in session. Before beginning with the matters appearing on today's agenda, we do have one recognition presentation today. I want to recognize Councilmember Zine at this time.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. I'd like to introduce to our colleagues and to our audience and our TV viewers, the members of the Los Angeles Police Department, the Political Action Committee, who are joining us today. And we see them in the front row. We can give the camera to spotlight them. Please stand and be recognized. These are all members of the Los Angeles Police Department, all members of the Protective League, Political Action Committee. And we thank you for joining us. They'll be with us today to see how we get business done here in City Hall. Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you for being here today. Political Action Committee, L.A. Police Protective League.
Mr. Zine. Does that bring back memories there?
Brings back fond memories. Yes, it does. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, first sort of business, please.
Approval of the minute.
Ms. Zine moves. Mr. Villarosa seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Ms. Gruel moves and Mr. Reyes seconds.
This is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
And I do not have requests from members of the public wishing to address the council on non-agenda items. General public comment for today's meeting is closed. Next item.
There is a request to continue one of the closed session items, item number 38. The city attorney is requesting that matter be continued for one week, which would be February 25th.
Members request to continue item 38 without objections. So ordered. Next item.
On the regular agenda, item number one is an item notice for public hearing. The applicant consents to a continuance to March 17th.
Members request to continue item number one, also without objection.
Item number two is a public hearing item that's a public convenience or necessity and is council district six. A motion is required to deny without prejudice.
Okay, let's call this special as we wait. Ms. Cardenas. Next items, please.
Next items are items which public hearings have been held, items three through 17.
Members, items three through 17. Now before us, public hearings have been held on these matters in committee. A motion from the floor would be required to reopen the public hearings. Seeing such motion, do we have requests for specials, beginning with Mr. Weiss?
Item 13, 14 for Mr. Weiss.
13 and 14, call special for Mr. Weiss.
I believe there is an amendment on item number nine. Mr. Garcetti has an amending motion to delete some of the recommendations.
Has that been circulated?
No, it's going to be a verbal amendment, I believe.
Let's call it special for Mr. Garcetti. Ms. Han.
Item five, call special by Ms. Han.
Any other specials? Members, items three through 17. Now before us, we have items five, nine, 13, and 14 called special. Any other specials? Seeing none, madam clerk, please open the roll. The balance of the items. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Items which public hearings have not been held, items 18 through 33. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Without objection, the council shall consider items 18 through 33 today. Colleagues that do not have requests from members of the public to address the council on these items. Public hearings are open. Public hearings are closed. Members should call any specials. Mr. Reyes. Item 29 called special by Mr. Reyes. Item 30 called special by Ms. Zine. Any other specials, items 18 through 33? Seeing none, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
Those are approved. Next item, please.
Next items are closed sessions 34 through 41, with the exception of 38, to wish to hold those on the desk.
Let's hold all closed session matters on the desk.
Going back to the items called special, item number two was council special, however, Ms. Cardenas is not here. Item number five was called special by council member Han.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to add an amending motion. This is a, actually already, an amendment. And it involves leases for boat slips that are in part are in Long Beach and part are in our port of Los Angeles. There's 80 slips that are in the port of Long Beach and 20 are located in the port of Los Angeles. And what we have before us, before my motion, is that, in fact, someday, if the port of Long Beach terminates the leases for those 80 boat owners, then the port of Los Angeles also has the right to terminate their lease for the 20. Some of these people will have leasing spaces for many, many, many years. Their family owned. And so what I wanted to do was verbally amend this to say that, in the event of termination of the lease with island yacht anchorage, that the harbor department first make every effort to relocate all tenants to other boat slips within the port of Los Angeles. So I want them to take an effort to relocate those boat owners before they terminate their lease. So I hope you'll agree with me.
Any objections to that amending motion? Seeing none, we'll consider item five as amended. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none, let's open the roll. Item five as amended, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number nine was called special, council member Garcetti.
Mr. Garcetti.
Yes, I just have a technical amendment. If we can delete items one, two, and three in there because they've already been acted on, I move the rest.
Okay. Without objection, item nine as amended. Other members wishing to be heard? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, please open the roll. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven eyes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Item number 13 called special by council member Weiss.
Mr. Weiss. Items 13 and 14 were called special for you.
Can we defer those for a few moments? We're still talking with staff.
Okay. Is Mr. Cardenas here yet? Not quite yet. Let's continue to hold item number two on the desk. I want to give Mr. Reyes ample time on item 29. So we can wait just a minute before getting to that item and proceed to item 30. Called special by Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. The management and labor on the grocer's strike, they are now meeting. They've been meeting for seven days at a secret location, and I don't know if progress is being made or not. But what I'd like to do is send this matter to the Housing, Community, and Economic Development Committee, and we can monitor it from that committee and take further action if necessary. Hopefully, since they've been meeting for seven days and they've been talking for seven days, some movement has taken place since they are communicating. That's what our motion was, resolution, asking them to meet, communicate, and hopefully get an end to this. So we'll send this with the approval of my colleagues to that committee, and we will monitor from there.
Okay. Any objection to referring this item to committee? Seeing none. Item 30 is still referred. Okay, are we ready yet on item number 13 or 14? I think not. Number two? Not quite yet. Let's proceed then to item number 29, which involves a special presentation by council member Reyes. Mr. Reyes, item 29. Mr. Reyes, before we get to the PowerPoint here, why don't you give us an overview on the item because there's a specific action item before us today.
Yes, so thank you, council president and colleagues. As you know, we've been working for almost over a year on the Ad Hoc River Committee. And today, we have an action that will extend the life of the river committee to continue forward with its work. The purpose of today's presentation, to give you an overview, a summary of what has been accomplished, where we're going, and to provide a roadmap, if you will, of what we will be accomplishing in the next year as part of the river committee. Most of you have received a report, and it gives you detailed information on the various projects and programs that we have been working on. As you know, the House points to the historic resource. L.A. Wallace founded on the river. And as we have been told by our resident historian, Councilman La Bange, that in 1768, the Portolo expedition, the Father Crispy, we had a whole group of people of great diversity coming to the river and actually anchoring down at a place that was so lush, full of water, full of green space, forests, rivers. When I read historic accounts about the wildlife that was there, it was amazing to find out we had trout and bears and all the things that you would find in the forest here, right around Elision Park. Thanks to the previous efforts, this is not a new issue. This is not something that just happened overnight. Back in the Maritam Bradley era, he conducted a study that concluded with a 1990 Greenbelt Report by the Planning and Recreation Parks Departments. The commission report identified many of the issues that we're building from. We are not about reinventing the wheel. We are talking about moving on information, building up data, and looking at strategies that allows us to move this tremendous project forward. My colleagues that have been part of this process, and I want to thank them for their discipline and their diligence in attending the committee meetings. Joining me has been Eric Garcetti, the vice chair, the 13th council district, Wendy Gruel, the second council district, Tom La Bange, the fourth council district, and Jan Perry from the ninth council district. Between all of these different representatives, we have been attacking this issue from a citywide point of view. From our point of view, it is a citywide issue. If you look at the river map, it runs 30 miles from the city valet, starting from Canoga Park down to Boyle Heights. It actually connects 10 council districts, 13 if we include the Tuhanga Wash and Compton Creek. We also are looking at a whole layer upon layers of jurisdictions. We're talking about coordinating the federal government, the state government, county, and other cities. So as we start looking at this project, it is a very complicated project, but in my mind, very doable with the kind of purposeful steps we've been taking to make sure that we are looking at a region-wide water system and that which we can control within our city boundaries. What gives us hope, what gives us direction, what gives us a sense of accomplishment, giving where we're at, is looking at the end results of what other cities have accomplished. During our first committee meetings, we brought the officials from Tempe, Arizona, from San Jose, California, from Denver, Colorado. And they shared with us their challenges, their approaches, their funding sources, their strategies. Councilman Perry brought some individuals over from San Antonio and had them share with us some of their work. The Ad Hoc Committee has sponsored many speakers. We have brought in people from the community, the nonprofits, the river advocates, people involved with the environment. And they've been giving us their priorities and their direction as to where they would like to see this river project evolve into. What's fascinating, and I want to pass these pictures around on another time, is Denver, Colorado, they have a confluence with the Cherry River meets the Platte River. And their area was also an industrial zone. Their area was also a river, once was a great river that was then dominated by rail yards. And they were able to make a 360 turn and actually commit resources to the level where now they are producing some incredible locations and assets for a city that has revitalized a river and has made it a place to be. Part of our success in this past year and a half is that we've literally changed, I believe, what is the culture in terms of how we view the river. For too long, and I've said this before, we've viewed the river as our backyard and not like our front yard should be like. In this particular stage, we have some great departments working together. We have the Department of Public Works, the Engineering Department, they've been doing tremendous work. Our city engineer, Gary Moore, has taken a very active and indeed, for thinking in terms of looking at the future, he's been able to lay out a lot of different strategies, and we appreciate that. Our city architect, Deborah Weintraub, has done tremendous work in combining all these elements, river, bridges, streetways, how the infrastructure actually comes together. We have the Department of Environmental Affairs, they've stepped up in a big way. Department of Recreation and Parks, the Department of Sanitation, and Department of Water and Power, and indeed, our CIO office. Everyone has stepped up in a big way where we have essentially institutionalized the future of this river to make a difference for our grandchildren. One of the key things here, though, is that as a city family, we've been able to connect with the county officials, the state officials, the federal officials, in order to leverage what has already been done in the past. Some of the work that you see happening today, and we have a slide here, are one of the bridge projects, it's actually in Councilmember Dennis Zine's district. It's part of what we are calling the City Bridge Program. Our city has already embarked on improving our bridges. What we are doing is creating a natural fit where the bridges can become landmarks, neighborhood gateways that also connect with the river so that we can have access points that's safe, access points that creates these bike paths and creates these kinds of landmarks that will be a catalyst for the future, where we can start stimulating economic development type strategies, where we can invoke more open space and where it's appropriate, housing what's appropriate, mixed-use commercial facilities. In City 13, we've put in place what we're calling security mileage markers. Those people who walk and bike the river don't have any addresses. They can point to, should they see a crime or want some assistance with police. We've literally labeled markers along the river that tells you exactly where you're at. That is registered with the neighboring police departments. And that gives us a sense of where you need to be located in case of an emergency. The other things that Councilman Garcetti's been working on is looking at how we bring stormwater harvesting type projects into the neighborhoods. There's a lot of potential there, given the proximity, and that's in the works, it's still in the concept stages, and that's evolving. In Taylor Yard, I'm very, very happy to say that we now have a 40-acre park. It's a 40-acre park that's nearby the river. It's a 40-acre park that's in a place that's most needed. It's a place that's very dense, park poor, and it's a cooperation between the state park systems and the city park systems, and together with the kind of leadership that was shown in the past by Senator Polanco, by then state Assembly Speaker Antonio Villarosa. We were able to bring huge chunks of resources to acquire this facility. And along with our current state senator Gil Sadio, our submember Jackie Goldberg, former council member, we've worked hard to make sure we push forward. The mayor's office has been tremendous in this effort, coordinating with the CLA's office on Mr. Dean. We've been able to push this to a point where we're actually starting construction and hope to see something there very, very soon. It's a $10 million project that has come in from other resources, multi-jurisdictional in the state and the federal government. It's a great, great statement to our commitment to our children. Headwork, CD4, Tom La Bange, he's been a tremendous job there. He's been trying his best to bring in the nonprofits, converting a once-water reservoir into habitat restoration with some reservoir activity in it. It'll be a 40-acre park, adjacent to Griffith Park. We're talking about a combination of water and power. He has Army Corps of Engineers. Wendy Gruel's district, she's been working tremendously, reaching her prop cave funds in the first phase. They've lined up a linear park, a green space that is the San Fernando Valley. In the valley, folks, we have over 20 miles of Ali River in the valley. When you talk about greenways, this is a place in which you can build up this kind of greenway. It's been supported by Economic Alliance of the San Fernando Valley, been supported by the Home Auto Association, had a meeting with the Hillside Federation. They were very excited about the potential of bringing back the river and its role in our river-water systems. Don'ts revitalization, there's a tremendous, tremendous potential here. As you can see on the slide, we have in Smolob Basin, what's known as wetlands in that area. Jan Perry has a vision, and it's very doable because it's been done in other cities, in Tempe, Arizona, to be exact, where they brought wetlands into the inner city. So imagine changing these wastelands of cement and asphalt into actual green space where you have the kind of wildlife that we can see and share with our children, with our schools, and actually begin softening and creating the kind of relief from our smog and the heat in the summer with these waterways. When we look at the struggle of the gardeners, we look at the struggle of creating open space for that kind of activity, these wetlands make a lot of sense. In CD14, we have in Hazard Park, the restoration of the historic creek. This particular creek, if you see it, it has, it's an old tributary that's connecting to the river. But in CD14, you also have a tremendous relationship between the wastelands of the rail yards along the river, around the Sears site. You have what's called daylighting of these streams into the river. You're talking about relief for the communities. We're talking about addressing a watershed potential that can truly enhance a very congested, a forgotten place, but it's a very historic place, and the river would make a tremendous claim there. Our 2004 agenda, I'm moving fast, I won't take too much time, I'm trying my best here. We're going to implement a revitalization plan. To that end, we've already acquired $1 million from the federal government that's been allocated to Army Corps of Engineers. They are right now conducting a hydrology study. It's important to understand that hydrology study is impactful because first and foremost, the river is a flood control channel. It is about public safety. We will not compromise that public safety, but we need to understand how this river can flow from its origin to the ocean in such a way where it will be safe. We have established in the revitalization plan, an outreach plan, we intend to communicate and engage all the communities in the area. We want to talk about what they see as their vision. In some places, it makes a lot of sense to change how the river flows, in other places it doesn't. We need to know from the communities, the neighborhood councils, from the various groups that have been involved in this process, to fold in their concerns and their priorities. We continue to pursue federal and state funding. We've been working with Army Corps of Engineers, Colonel Thompson. When the Army Corps of Engineers actually flew in a helicopter with me over the river and was very excited to see what potential we have, knowing the success in other parts of the country. State funding is on the way. We're competing for about 50 funds, and we're looking at the potential of a resource bond and other tools that we can generate more resources. As I said, the completing of the hydraulic study is underway. It allows us to start running scenarios. We can actually start defining where the river dams can be placed. When we talk about rubber dam, it's talk about, let's talk about creating waterways in the city in such a way where we can leverage what we can to the neighborhoods next to the river. So part of this revitalization plan is looking at the rezoning and redefining of the use of land along the river so we can bring those assets and those elements of relief for those communities that truly need that kind of intervention. Our completed river projects include bypass. We've already concluded several parks, we're already underway, both large and small. As you can see, in the past, we've chosen to neglect the river. We've allowed it to become a wasteland of trash. We've missed opportunities when you look at the 1930 Olmsted Plan, what they had in vision along the river. And now, we are at a point where we can look at the future. If we understand the notion of multi-benefits, if we understand what other countries have done, like in Germany and other European countries, and Japan, they understand the value of water. They understand the need in the future, and they've done something about it. It's about time we take that proactive approach. Here you see in the Ad Water Village between CD14 and CD13, and some of it comes with CD1, the natural habitats during the spring. You'll see flora and fauna, you'll see birds, you'll see wildlife that you would never imagine would be this close to the center of a metropolis like Los Angeles. This is going to be a long-term challenge. We need to set the table. Our legacy in this council should be that this council, this class of legislators at the city council level was able to set the table for the future. We were actually in a position to let everyone know the potential of this river and to actually start dealing with housing issues, open space issues, issues of looking at a natural watershed that has a regional impact. The more we can speak to the region, the more we can address the needs that continue to pressure an area that is absorbing over 60,000 people per month as they come into the Southern California area. With that, I hope I get your unanimous approval to continue this great work. And again, I want to compliment my colleagues for sticking it out. I know in an era of term limits, it's hard to appreciate the immediate gratification, but I would hope that we can understand the long-term positive impact of constituents and those who we are here to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Ms. Garcetti.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Reyes, for the presentation and for your leadership on the committee. With the help of your staff, too, deserves plenty of credit. Really set a, or opened a new chapter here in Los Angeles, setting a standard for how we kind of can re-envision not just the river but our entire city. So I thank you for that. And I rise in support of this, obviously, as vice chair of the committee and as somebody who is excited about moving on some of the ideas we've been talking about and seeing in other cities. I think if we look back 2002 and 2003, maybe the kind of years of dreaming and research, these next two years will probably be years of planning, at least some of the initial projects that we know the planning process will take from other things, even many, many more years than that. And I hope that as soon as, you know, 2006, maybe 2006, 2007, we'll be enacting some of these plans that we're talking about as well. Because I know that as we get expectations up and people come out and testify, it's really important to keep that momentum going and showing deliverable, even if they're small things and difficult budget years, but getting our share of Prop 51 monies and other monies that we can then come down and actually put in the ground so people can see what blue space does, what, how green space evolves when we have waterways, whether that's in communities or along the L.A. River. And I would just make the suggestion today that we actually add, as part of the preview of the river committee, also the other watersheds that are a part of L.A. City that flow in or parallel to the L.A. River. parallel to the LA River. We had an environmental quality committee today, a motion about the Biona watershed, for instance, and there's been some wonderful studies who have looked at all the streams that we have or that we used to have here in the city of Los Angeles. And it's interesting, you look at the freeways that we have today, those mirror where roads used to be, which mirror where some of the Indian pathways used to be, which really mirror where the waterways were, small streams, sometimes rivers in Los Angeles. So we still use these same places for transport, they're literally underground though now, usually in storm drains. In the East Hollywood area, Bimini Baths, we daylighted one of these streams, it was called Sacatela Creek in the old days, and you can see where it used to flow throughout the city. We have these streams throughout, I think one of the only ones that still exists is in Tom Labange's district. In Hancock Park, there's about three blocks that have a natural stream still running through them. That's right. And we have the potential throughout the city, not only to think about it just in the LA River, but throughout the city where we have some of these waterways and to tie in what we're doing in terms of cleaning the water up and daylighting streams throughout the city so that all neighborhoods would begin to share this, even those five council districts that don't have part of the LA River in it, but the three others that have the Tuhanga watershed. And I don't think there's a single council district that didn't used to have streams in it, so maybe we could add that as well, really build on the information that we've done these two years, look at the next two years, the planning years, and after that start and take action. And I think this will be a generational change as we've talked about, how we approach not only the planning of the city but how we look at water and clean water in the city too. So I rise in full support. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Mr. Garcetti, Mr. Villar Gosa.
Mr. President, members, I want to acknowledge and congratulate Councilmember Reyes for his leadership and all the members of the committee. Some years ago, when I was first elected to the state assembly, I represented the Allee Valley, Cypress Park, Glassell Park, Eagle Rock and Boyle Heights, most of which touched the river in some way. And the people that oftentimes don't get credit were those visionaries, the friends of the river, many of the environmental groups who were talking about a plan, the Homestead Act that had been put together in the 1930s that created a vision for parks and the LA River Way to be a greenway and a green belt, an emerald necklace of parks all around the river. And I remember when they first came to speak to me about that emerald necklace, I honestly felt like, great idea, but where are we going to get the money? And we did. And when I authored Prop 12, never in my wildest imagination did I believe that we were going to be able to get the kind of consensus about the LA River and its revitalization and reclaiming it and doing as Councilmember Reyes has said, making it something that we put in our front yard and not in our backyard. And so I dare say, although I'm not a member of this committee, if I had to entrust the legacy of that 87 million that I put together at the state, to entrust it with you, Mr. Reyes, who's lived along that side of the river. We first met engaging in charrettes to determine what we could do with the river. I dare say if there was one person in this city that I would feel as comfortable as I do, it would be you. Congratulations on your work. I support the idea that we move to extend the time limit. It's an important thing. We need to continue the work that we've begun. Thank you.
Ms. Hahn.
Thanks, Mr. President. I too just want to say what a great, great, great opportunity it is for us and we have this moment in time right now and it's exciting to be a part of this class that is finally looking to reclaim the river for all of Los Angeles and for future generations. And you're right, other states, other countries have seemed to really capitalize on the value and benefit of water and what that means and how attractive that is to people. People love the water. People love the water. People love to walk by the water and enjoy it. And it's certainly a goal that is so worthy and so noble that I just really want to thank you and for all the members on this Ad-Hoc River Committee for your leadership. And when I look at the guiding principles for restoring the river to Los Angeles, it talks about parks and walking paths, bicycle trails for recreation and transportation, gathering spaces, public art, community markers, restaurants, cafes, mixed-use areas, integrating parks, housing, retail, jobs, schools. I mean, it's just a really wonderful vision that I think what you've been able to do today is allow the rest of us to sort of catch this vision. And I am excited because this Friday morning, down in my end of the world, we're going to break ground on the first phase of our boardwalk, our promenade along the LA Harbor. It's at 9:00 AM. If you want to come and also be a moment in time when we give access of our waterfront and harbor back to the people. It's a moment that many in the harbor community have been waiting for a long time. They felt like it was a beautiful harbor, we had waterfront property and yet people did not have access to it. So we will begin the first phase of the promenade Friday morning and expect it to really go all the way from the Vincent Thomas Bridge to Breakwater so that someday, generations from now, people will be able to do just what you're envisioning for the LA River. So I think at my end, we're doing it, in the middle of our city with the river, we're doing it. I think we're finally going to be known as a city that does understand the benefits of our water, does believe in it and looks to do everything we can to enhance its benefits long-term. So congratulations to all of you. This is a vision, this is a dream, really worth making a reality.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Hahn. Councilmember Weiss is next. Why don't we, Councilmember Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize for that. I just want to thank Mr. Reyes for everything he's doing. I mean, it's really, it's extraordinary and it's really, it's really a testament to your vision. I mean, you worked here in other capacities for so many years and I'm sure while you were working here, this was something that was just burning inside of you to make happen. And it's so wonderful to see everything that you've done and to see everything that's on the drawing board for what you and the rest of the city are going to achieve in the next couple of years. I know that just in a small part of the river that Wendy Grul and I share in the San Fernando Valley, which is, you know, perhaps far afield, perhaps from some of your initial motivations, just to know the incredible difference in the quality of life that these projects are going to make there and the incredible potential that you're going to activate in terms of people understanding what we can really expect from our urban environment in Los Angeles. It's very impressive and I want to thank you for the presentation and thank you for, you know, dedicating yourself and creating a committee that you didn't have to create. Thank you there, Mr. Weiss.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weiss. Ms. Grul.
Thank you, Mr. President, and pleased to also stand up in support of continuing the Ad-Hoc River Committee and the leadership of Ed Reyes. If you've been at a committee or talked to Ed, you see his eyes light up when he talks about the river and he is dreaming for the future, he's dreaming for the future of our kids, who I often talk about. I want them to know that there's a river in Los Angeles. And when I asked some kids in a classroom recently, I said, "Did you know that we have a river?" And they said, "No." "LA doesn't have a river." And I said, "In fact, we do. We need to educate people about what the river stands for and again, its potential." And there is a slice of my district right now that they have been putting in the bike paths and the trees on the side and stairs up to some of the other, the parking areas that they'll be able to utilize. And we're working with the county of Los Angeles, also an area in which they are developing with some of the leadership of my studio city of community. And I believe that once we have completed some of these areas, people are going to understand the potential. They are going to want to be supportive and to, I think I'd say, out of the box, and be able to identify resources. Because that is ultimately what is going to make a difference, is identifying resources to make this a reality. And I saw Supervisor Zev Yarslovsky last night who was talking about the Tuhanga Wash which ultimately connects with the river. And the partnership that we've developed with Department of Water Power in that location, the bike ways that we're going to be able to have, and all the ways in which they can be able to interconnect, it's going to make us one city. So people know the various cultural areas and ways in which they can learn about their communities. So I'm pleased to be part of the River Committee and know that we have our work cut out for us. But if we don't dream, we'll never be able to accomplish some of the things we'd like to see and it's not just with the river, it's the priorities we have in Los Angeles. So, Ed, congratulations and glad to be part of this committee. We're looking forward to some of the subjects that we have talked about becoming reality and touting across this country. And the importance of revitalizing the Los Angeles River. Thank you very much and look forward to serving on this committee in the future.
Thank you very much, Ms. Grul. Thanks to Mr. Labange, followed by Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Ludlow, Mr. Stein, and then Mr. Reyes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti and Mr. Padilla. Thank you for organizing the Ad-Hoc Committee as president, which is important credit for Alex, which is so important. But Ed, your leadership as a chair, we all talk about the Los Angeles River. How many of you swam in it, huh? You swam in it, swam in it? Eric, come on, where'd you swim in? How old were you when you swam in it? 25, 21, you're an officer?
My father has pictures to prove it.
Oh, I want to see that. Anyway, 223 years ago, 44 people walked nine miles from the Mission Tanque Road to the banks of the Los Angeles River. And Janice, if there wasn't the Los Angeles River there, they would have walked all the way to San Pedro. And not he, Jim, but you, Janice, would be mayor of San Pedro, which would be Los Angeles today because the city would have been founded on the coast, just like San Diego, just like San Francisco, just like Seattle. But it's the river that brought the people to the pueblo and the original town boundaries from Hoover to exposition, to Eastern Avenue by Fountain Avenue and the pueblo of the city. And now it's grown and grown and just what the joy is, Ed, is all of us, and as a family man yourself, last weekend I rode with my son out the river on the bikeway and it was a wonderful experience and there were so many ducks there. It was very exciting to see because they're coming back to the river. Because a lot of good work has been done by a very sanitation and used to send pollutants into the river, but it's cleaned it up tremendously. More work needs to be done. I see LaValle Lanyard, who's a great graduate of Caltech, a former engineer with Water Power, number five man when he retired from the great high school of John Marshall. He knows the work of what the river meant. And we know William Mahalan, who's the father of the waterway, lived right near the river at Los Feliz and Riverside Drive. And all this is so important to have a discussion. So it's real proud to be about the Los Angeles River. Antonio, you spoke about the Homestead Plan. Prior to that, in the 20s, there was a city beautiful movement because there was great conflict between people of the Boyle Heights neighborhood and Lake Heights, transversing where all the railroad tracks were against the river. So they built these great bridges, Merrill Butler, deputy city engineer designed them, Sixth Street Bridge, longest bridge in the city, next to the Vincent Thomas Bridge, beautiful bridge, Fourth Street Bridge, all the way up to Spring Street Bridge, the Buena Vista Bridge, the North Broadway Bridge, the Hyperion Bridge, so wonderful. And this little picture that's on this display that is passed out by committee today is from the Sunny Brook Bridge, which is an extremely pretty bridge that I and my son Charles just went over Sunday as we rode our bikes along the Los Angeles River. All this is being talked about, Ed, because of your leadership on the committee and as we contribute and as you say how it connects the whole city, from where the Calabasas and Bell Creeks come together in the third district right by Cadenaro Park High School, all the way down in the challenges that were there. There were mistakes made, there were probably a lot of opportunities that they could have done a better job when they answered the problem of flood control in the 30s with the great floods in 35 where they just put this little drain through the valley. But we could change that and we'll change that and we push ahead. And I tell you, members, nothing in my discussions with community around the city excites people when we talk about the river and how it connects people. How it connects the people. And I think it's important that we have this discussion, it's important that we have this committee and we push ahead. Last night I was a guest out on Sunset Boulevard at KCT where all the, no, that's Councilman Parks does that, Mr. President. All the former governors were there. Governor Davis spoke, just a second there, Mr. Garcetti, you're a Democrat. Governor Davis spoke.
That's why I want to give everybody their equal time.
Governor Davis spoke and he spoke about what his legacy was and he talked about the park bonds that Antonio and he put together that brought about Taylor Yard and the cornfields. And that's going to connect Allee and Griffiths and all the way up to the valley. So it's so important, I think, to recognize that this River Committee gives us that opportunity. And I thank you, all of us, for being part of this effort to make the River Los Angeles great. One last thing I want to do, Ed, I want to dike it up underneath the Sixth Street Bridge so you get that blue water that comes across and we could have someone rake it in the morning, all voluntary, one day a week. Thank you.
You heard it here first, Mr. Reyes. Thank you very much, Mr. Labange, Mr. Cardenas.
I forgot what I was going to say. I just wanted to say thank you to Ed Reyes and the committee on this important issue. But, little tongue-in-cheek, but also on a serious note, I think it would be wonderful if we found out that this great extensive river that goes through our city and all the tributaries, if we could actually have children of Los Angeles enjoy something like whitewater rafting within our city. It might be a dream, it might be a pipe dream, it might be something that's unfeasible, but I think this committee should explore every avenue and opportunity. And I noticed in the documentation, you're actually doing something with this Ad-Hoc Committee that is actually very important. I think it is very efficient to do for government to not think so highly of themselves that we can't copy what other communities have done so well. You have what's going on in Arizona, in San Antonio, Texas, as examples of what we can look at. Maybe there are differences where we can't duplicate it, but maybe we can learn from their mistakes and their successes. So that Angelenos can see the best products come out of a resource that has been literally sitting there and flowing through our city for so many years. So maybe it isn't a pipe dream. Maybe you will come to a conclusion where we're going to have opportunities for recreation, opportunities for efficiencies, opportunities to actually clean our water better and make our Bay Area cleaner or not hinder it the way we have in the past. Maybe these are the kinds of things that you can do with this committee. So I support extending this committee's lifetime. I think it's a very important issue. And maybe what will come out of it is kids whitewater rafting through this city and enjoying themselves and getting to enjoy their city in a way that nobody ever dreamed of. And maybe we can do it without them having to take a tetanus shot if they fall into the water. So I wish you well and I definitely support the expansion of this committee.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla.
Mr. Cardenas, are you proposing an alternative way to get downtown from the valley? The freeway's so backed up in whitewater. Or I can actually dream of a day when there's the whitewater rafting, they know each other, bridges that Mr. Labange was talking about, we could do the bungee jumping over the river. There's a lot of potential here. Actually, seriously, colleagues, I want to rise and say a couple of things. First of all, I put myself in the category of Antonio Villar Gosa. This is a wonderful committee that we have, one that I too wish I could serve on, but if we put everybody on the committee that wants to serve on the committee, we'd have a committee of 15. And so we have to defer to a couple of our colleagues to do the bulk of the work on this issue. And I couldn't think of anybody better to lead the committee, to lead this effort than you, Councilmember Reyes. So appreciate the update that you've given us and all the work that you've done for the last couple of years on this. Colleagues, I also wanted to compliment Councilmember Reyes on something that's very procedural around here. When this council began to turn over a couple of years ago, the council as a body did away with a lot of Ad-Hoc Committees that existed before, with very, very few exceptions. Whatever Ad-Hoc Committees exist today, exist for a very specific focus, purpose, and they have sunset causes on them. Ad-Hoc Committees are meant to be ad hoc, temporary in nature, and at some point go away. And so the Sunset Day that we initially placed on this committee is coming up and that's why this item is before us today because Mr. Reyes and the committee, I think, has justified an extension of time for this committee to further build upon the work that they've done already. And so I wanted to point that out as an example, as a model for the other Ad-Hoc Committees and members and chairs to follow. You know, when the time comes, we're going to have to ask ourselves, was this Ad-Hoc Committee worth having? To show us what you did, to show us what you got. And if you're going to advocate for an extension of time, then justify that to the rest of the body. And I think in the presentation that Councilmember Reyes guided us to do and the laying out of the possibilities for the future, he did a tremendous, tremendous job. One of the items, one of the frames in that presentation was usage of the river in other cities around this country and around the world. The only one that I'm somewhat familiar with is in the city of San Antonio. And I can tell you from the various visits and briefings that I've had with the folks who made the San Antonio River possible, I know that it began with flood control, just as our system has here. But after adequate flood control infrastructure was put into place, then the
was put into place, then the dream came and took over. It was a dream that leaders in San Antonio had that evolved into what the San Antonio River is today. And if the city of San Antonio has an image and a marketing plan that can be defined by a river, I can only expect even bigger and greater things for the city of Los Angeles. So I'll watch Mr. Cardenas whitewater raft down the river. I just want to sit at a cafe or at a restaurant near the LA River, enjoying the river going by and seeing the downtown LA skyline off in the distance with the lights on at Dodger Stadium. I too have my little bits and pieces to add to that LA River dream. But thank you, Mr. Reyes, count on my support.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. Briefest speech possible. Just, Ed, I want to congratulate you. I remember Mike Espy at the federal level really had a similar passion for urban rivers and the work that was done under the Clinton administration. When I was with the LA Conservation Corps, we got an opportunity to send some of our corps members around the country to look at some urban rivers. The Cuyahoga River in Cleveland, the Olentangi River in Columbus, Ohio, a number of those come to mind. And it really did remind me of how the waterways in urban settings sometimes are really taken for granted. We think about the Mississippi or we think about the Colorado and the Snake River in the rural and mountainous regions. But the masses of people who live in this country live in the urban setting. They don't, they don't own property like Dennis Zine in Idaho. But we're all trucking to, we don't get that view. I'll be coming back. I was born in Idaho. When I left, the demographic shifted by 85 percent. But anyway.
So Ed, I really salute your work. And unfortunately, you probably won't be on the council when all of the legacy comes to fruition for your leadership and vision. But that's what leadership is, is that you can see years down the road what life should be like for our children, our grandchildren. And Tom held it up for the public who haven't seen this. This photo could be the Snake River. It could be any part of the Mississippi. Folks, that's right here in the city of Los Angeles. So salute your work, Ed, and all of the committee members. Continue. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, that big property owner.
I only purchased that land so I could take you home someday, Martin. I just wanted to commend Councilmember Reyes for his dedication to this project. I know he's very passionate about the LA River. They took a natural river and turned it into concrete. We're trying to do something natural with the environment, which benefits every community from the far western San Fernando Valley, as Tom Labange often times mentions. It starts way out there in the third district and runs all the way down. So the people out in the valley have the benefit as well as other people in the city of Los Angeles. So I commend Ed for your dedication. I know you've been very, very committed to this. You've seen it through. Whatever you need from support from me, and I'm sure the folks in the valley will be very supportive. It's something very important. I just want to caution one thing that I heard about, the whitewater rafting. And it's supposed to be raining. We're supposed to have some problems. We have the swift water team that is implemented by the fire department. So we don't want anyone to jump in and do whitewater rafting as the rains come the next day, today, tomorrow, whatever. We want to wait till it's a proper environment for the whitewater rafting. And Ed Reyes, and I'm sure Tom Labange will be there, going down that river and enjoying that activity in the whitewater as a raft from the San Fernando Valley, past Griffith Park, right into the ocean. Thank you.
Mr. Zine, you forgot to mention the first annual LA River Harley ride sponsored by Dennis P. Zine. Mr. Labange.
I just wanted to tag on what Dennis was saying about that very important issue because it is not safe to be near the waters of the river and with rains coming up. And Mike Rasso, who is Binsy's husband from the Los Angeles Police Department, he received the Medal of Valor for saving a young man in the Tahanga War, Pacoima War, and had to sit in high waters to save this young man. So you know the tragedy around that. Mr. President, I want to thank again Mr. Reyes for this presentation. And I hope sometime Ms. Han can make a presentation on what's happening at the Port of Los Angeles and all the work you're doing, you know, where the water ends up. Because there's nothing worse when you see that picture in the LA Times of all the styrofoam in the harbor there. So there's pollution that we can remove in our streets before it gets to the river. So I think this was very beneficial to have that. And I just wanted to thank you. Hope I get a shot sometime to tell you what's going on at the Observatory Zoo and the Greek and the Autry. Because this is a very important presentation for all of us to learn about the river. And it's important. And Mr. Garcetti asked what the name of it is. It's the Brookside Neighborhood, which is an open end of the original Bologna Creek, which ends up in the 11th District, which really starts in Griffith Park in the Bronson Canyons. When they corried all the mountains for the red car right away, that took away the creek, but it still runs also through Wilshire Country Club underneath the city streets through Burroughs Middle School and out to the ocean. It's a fabulous history of ours. And I told Councilmember Parks, although he hasn't spoken this morning, he would have. But there was a great flood in like 1833 that redirected the LA River from going out to the Santa Monica Bay to go into the Long Beach, San Pedro Bay. So all this great history is here. I just want to thank everybody and keep moving forward. But safely and stay away from the river and always be cautious of the rapid waters, whatever they have, flash floods or whatever. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Labange. Mr. Reyes to close.
Thank you, Council President. I just, I was remiss. I wanted to acknowledge several congress members who've been very instrumental in this process. Councilmember Alar has stepped up in a big way and actually started putting items in the budget for Amricor Virginia to move on hydrology study. And actually began to open up a different revenue base for the city of LA, along with Congresswoman Burman, who also has been an advocate. And our hope is to put together a cater of congress members from the Southern California area to continue lobbying at this level so that we have the resources to meet a water mandate and to clean the waterways before it gets to the ocean so we can make our oceans healthier. And I just want to thank you, the body for your observations, your tremendous work in the past, your tremendous work now. And looking forward to working with you in the future. And Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Zine, they do kayaking. They don't go in the river, but the actual university has a kayak team. And they train on the waterways. And they do have floating boats that do service cafes and do have beverages and food as they go from one point to the next, as they look at the skyline of Tempe. So these are the things that has happened. There's no reason why we can't do it. So thank you very much. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. We do have an item to vote on this morning. Madam Clerk, please open the roll on item 29. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote. Unanimous approval. Let's come back to item number two now. If Mr. Cardenas is ready.
Yeah, I'd like to ask if we put that item over until the 27th.
The number two, request to continue, item number two, to 27th. That would be next Friday without objection. And Mr. Ludlow.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to invite up for one second. I know we didn't get this in during public comments, but the president of Stintorians, our Black Firefighters Association, Armando Hogan, has an important announcement that we wanted to get in before he has to run back to duty. So thank you, Mr. President, for allowing this exception.
Thank you, Councilman. I appreciate that. Honorable President, as well as the honorable members of the council, my name's Armando Hogan. I'm a 21-year veteran of the Los Angeles Fire Department. Currently, I'm assigned to Fire Station 88 on the Sea Platoon as a captain, too, there. Today, I'm here as the president of the Stintorians, which is the association of the African-Americans in the fire service. And on February 28th, we are honoring what is believed to be the first line of duty death in the Los Angeles Fire Department. The gentleman's name is Sam Haskins. I apologize, we have no known photographs. We were, this was brought to our attention through a gentleman from the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department, who actually was looking in the archives for information concerning the first death in the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department and came across this and brought it to our attention. I'll be very brief. I thank you for the time. The tribute has been planned for Saturday, February 28th at 10:00 a.m. That information has been back to all of your offices, and my office coordinator will follow up today and tomorrow with your respective chiefs of staff. The ceremony will take place at the Evergreen Cemetery, and that's at 204 North Evergreen Avenue. A headstone will be placed at Mr. Haskins' gravesite and unveiled. A repass will immediately follow at the African-American Firefighter Museum, and that's at 1401 South Central, which is right across the street from Coca-Cola, since I heard all this historic speaking this morning. We know that's been there a long time. And we are requesting that members assemble at the cemetery's entrance. I wanted to be here to extend a personal invite to all of you, because not only do you support the Fire Department in many ways, particularly in these difficult times of budgetary process, but more importantly, I would like all of you, if your calendar permits, to come out and speak and say a few words. Because although this gentleman happens to be African-American, it is still a historic event for the city of Los Angeles. I thank you one, I thank you all.
Thank you very much.
President, and for everybody that just sort of peeked up their eyes, about what year did Mr. Haskins pass? He passed away, it was November 19th, 1897. We just want to make sure it wasn't recent. That was, no, no, it wasn't two weeks ago. No, sir.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item number 13, call special by Councilmember Weiss.
Mr. Weiss. Everybody on 13 and 14.
Thank you, Mr. President. I've been told that the general manager of this department is out sick today. And so let's, yeah, I, I don't think the camera cut your facial expression there, Mr. President. But that's what I've been told. And so let's continue the matter till Friday. And the questions that I have, and I know that Mr. Parks has, only continue to mount here. And we look forward to having it all aired out on Friday.
Items 13 and 14?
Yes, please.
Okay. Members, any objection? Seeing none, 13 and 14 carry over to Friday, February 28th. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Motion shall be posted and referred.
I do, and this is the time for the closed session items.
Okay. Do we have any housekeeping before going into closed session?
No, there are no excuses.
Okay. In conformance with California law, the council will now adjourn into closed session. Welcome back into open session, members of the council, members of the public. Before proceeding with votes on closed session matters, let me announce for the record that Ms. Misakowski has been recused on item 35, a closed session matter on today's agenda, and was not present during the council's consideration of this item in executive session. Madam Clerk, item before us, please.
First item before council is item number 35, and that's settlement in the case of Ickman versus City of Los Angeles. And that's including a cross action. And the settlement amount is $575,000.
Okay. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
And let the record reflect Ms. Misakowski has been absent for consideration and vote on item 35. We can now welcome her back in on the balance of items remaining before us. Madam Clerk.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number 41, and that's in the case of Louis Silver versus City of Los Angeles. It's a workers' comp case, 74% permanent disability. And that's in the amount of $106,375,000.
Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, please. Fourth with on item 35 as well.
Our next item is item number 40, and that's also a workers' comp case, Michael Jackson versus City of Los Angeles. That's 100% disability, $490 per week for the applicant's lifetime.
Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with, next item.
Item number 39, a settlement in the case of Miguel Crespo versus City of Los Angeles et al., and that's in the amount of $220,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
Fourth with, please. Next item.
Next item is item number 36, and that's settlement in the case of Oscar Lafarga versus City of Los Angeles in the amount of $128,000.
Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Colleagues, that is the end of our agenda today. Do we have any announcements? Announcements today? If there are no announcements, do we have adjourning motions? Please rise for adjourning motions.
Right.
Ms. Han.
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have all the information today, but I thought it was certainly appropriate that we adjourn our meeting today in honor of Sybil Brand, who passed away apparently last evening. And again, I don't have her long list of accomplishments or the time that her service will be, which I hope we will have that by Friday. But one of the things that I think was to her great credit was, my father actually had appointed her to a commission in the County of Los Angeles, which was charged with inspecting all the jails in LA County, inspecting the facilities. And she was so appalled at the conditions of the women's jail and felt like, no matter what, even if you were in jail, even if you were a prisoner, you certainly deserved some sense of dignity and some sense of privacy in jail. And so she worked very hard to correct conditions that we had, particularly for women who were incarcerated. And when the new county jail for women was built, it was named after her, the Sybil Brand Institute. So she really stood up, really, for those who least have a voice in our society. And for that, I think many people owe her a huge debt of gratitude. And I'm sure other people have other fond remembrances of Sybil Brand. She's been around as long as I can remember and certainly was a philanthropist and really dedicated her life, particularly, she was married to Harry Brand, who passed before her. He, of course, was the Public Relations Marketing Director at 20th Century Fox for many, many years. But since he passed on, she really has dedicated her life to improving the quality of life for many people in the County of Los Angeles.
Mr. Labange.
No, I just wanted to add that I remember working for John Ferraro. Sybil Brand had many of these big holiday parties for the children, long before it became very popular to get toys for children throughout the County of Los Angeles. I had the pleasure to meet her several times. And recently, she was here in council in the last several years. And Ron Ingram, who was her friend who would bring her down from Atwater Village, but I believe she probably was 103 years old. But truly a remarkable woman who had a great passion for the people of this county, which is great when we all have advocates for others, the voices for those who don't have the voices, which is so important. So I would just want to stand and hopefully get a more formal recognition of Sybil Brand, who truly was an outstanding citizen of this city and of this county as well.
Ms. Gruehl.
Mr. President, I too wanted to add my condolences. I met Sybil Brand when I was 18 years old as part of the mayor's youth advisory council on the youth leadership training programs that we had, and particularly doing juvenile justice programs. And she would come to some of the schools that we were working with. She was a fireball then, and she was probably in her 70s at the time. So she is someone who has made a mark on this city and this county particularly. And as Ms. Han and Mr. Labange mentioned, she used her voice to speak for people who otherwise did not have a voice in the conditions in some of the jails for women. And I think inspired many women who unfortunately may have committed crimes, but found when they talked to Sybil, because she used to go visit some of those locations, inspired them to get their life back on track. And so she is someone who has impacted the lives of our residents here in Los Angeles.
Ms. Ludlow.
I just wanted to thank Councilmember Han and Gruehl and Labange for the words. I didn't get a chance to meet Sybil Brand. And what I really want to say thank you for is, there are those honors that are bestowed upon an individual to, for their work, naming of buildings and naming of schools. One of the saddest experiences that I've witnessed is the lineup of children and fathers outside of Sybil Brand, you know, jail, to go visit their mothers. And I've visited a lot of prisons in my days and visited a lot of jails, and they're sad in and of themselves. But something about watching kids and their fathers stand in line to go visit a mother, and you think about the name that will resonate for so many decades in the very sort of sad light, to hear such great words about her advocacy for children and women. It is truly great that you're doing this today. And if we need to do it in another way, I think we should, because the name, unfortunately, goes with such a sad dynamic for so many people. And it's great to hear good words spoken of Sybil Brand. So thank you for sharing that with us.
Ms. Zine. Ms. Zine.
A young police officer, learning of a facility, Sybil Brand Institute. And later, had the opportunity to meet Sybil Brand, and she was very close to Sherem Block. They were very, very close, very dear friends, and very close to the Bachmann family. I remember seeing Sybil Brand at many, many events, many dinners. And as the years passed, she got more and more feeble, but she was still there. And she was there in her spirit, in her enlightenment. And all those years that Sybil Brand Institute has been in operation, she's always wanted to turn people's lives in a positive direction, from a negative to a positive. But it's sad to see her passing. Sybil Brand Institute will remain. Her name will always ring true to the city of Los Angeles. A very, very dear lady, very sweet lady. And her passing, she lived a long, long life, and I don't know if it was 103, but she definitely had an opportunity to make some changes and make some difference in Los Angeles. And she was well-respected for all that she's done for people in our city, in our county. May she rest in peace.
Other tributes? Mr. Weiss.
I ask that you take note of the fact that we're joined today by Ida Bauer, who is the widow of Mario E. Bauer, in whose memory I ask you to join me in adjourning today. I first met the Bowers about a year or two ago at a homeowner's meeting, and had the... It was a very unfortunate situation, but had the privilege of working with them to try to resolve a development dispute in their neighborhood. And I'm very sad today that I have to ask you to join me in adjourning in memory of Mario, who passed last December. He was born in August 1934 in Indianapolis, and soon went on to an extraordinary career in higher education, in the sciences. He graduated from the University of Chicago, first with a bachelor's degree in chemistry, then later on with a master's degree in chemistry. And then, at the young age of 25, received a PhD in physical chemistry from MIT. And later studied postdoctoral research in the Netherlands, again, in chemistry, and began his professional career here at UCLA in 1962, where he served for over four decades as a professor in the chemistry department, and later served as chair of the Committee on Environmental Chemistry. An extraordinary term of achievement at UCLA, which was marked by his involvement in several campus activities, and truly UCLA became one of the great loves of his life. He was blessed with many children. Unfortunately, one of them, Nicholas, passed before he did. His other children include Matthew, Kim, Joshua, and Saskia. And he is also survived by his wife and his constant companion, Ida, who's with us today. They were very involved in their neighborhood church, the Westwood Presbyterian Church in my district. And were very involved in many other activities in the community. It's wonderful that you're here today with us. We really appreciate your joining us for this moment. And I ask all my colleagues, as we adjourn today, to stand for a moment in recognition and in memory of your late husband. Thank you for being here.
Ms. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Request for adjourning in memory of John James Amott. John passed away February 11th. John James Amott, a resident of Agora Hills, and a retired motor sergeant, Los Angeles Police Department. John was born April... John was born June 12th, 1943, in Glencoe, New York. Transferred to Valley Traffic Division as a motor sergeant, December 31st, 1989. Retired June 27th, seven months ago, after 30 years on the job. Wonderful husband, father, and friend, who will be truly missed. He is survived by his wife, Maureen, two sons, Matthew and Patrick, and daughter, Michelle. I had the opportunity to work with John, and he was one of these very hard-charging, happy, happy people. He'd always have a smile, and he became known as the voice of the valley. He was always on the police radio, calling for assistance for people, to help people. Well-known by the police officers, also by the highway patrol, also LA City Fire Department. John was a real legend in the San Fernando Valley, and he worked very hard to become a motor sergeant. He loved that career as a motor sergeant. He was out walking, seven months after retirement, he'd applied to San Fernando Police Department as a reserve officer, and he was trying to get himself in shape to become a reserve officer in San Fernando Police Department. And while he was out walking his neighborhood, he passed away of a heart attack. So John James Amott, may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Smith.
Mr. Zine, I want to join in that. And John was the patrol officer assigned to the 12th District for a couple of years as our complaint officer. And my staff, I'm sure when I tell them today, would truly be broken up, because they really, really liked John. He was really a member of our staff, even though he wore a badge and a gun, and went on his motorcycle and did his job for us. But he worked out of our office for a number of years, and he was greatly respected by the community, by my staff, and everyone that worked with him. I was... I'm sorry to hear of his loss, and I'd like to be a second on that, please.
Ms. Ludlow.
Just wanted to... I just got a phone call, and I want to get this in because of the services. Don't have much information, but Leonia Ford, the father of Pat Ford, who's international vice president of SCIU, just lost her father this weekend. And I know there's information coming, and I understand they're going to be announcing services coming up. But I want to make sure that we get this on the record. Adjourning in his memory, apparently died Sunday evening, Leonia Ford.
Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you all very much. This meeting is adjourned.
You are watching LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
......